A gente começa. Tudo pronto com o senhor, professor Nicolalis?
Eu tô pronto.
Ótimo. Hello there, welcome to our closing session. I'm Davison Lopez. And today I have the pleasure to host this very special occasion. I'd like to say hello to all of our students. We haven't seen each other for a few days. It's great to be in the company of each one of you. We are having now one session that has never happened in our summer school in Brazilian studies, not the way we are having this year. It's the very first time when top-notch Brazilian scientist from the life sciences, natural sciences, is joining us. And it's someone very, very special, very, very well-known in the country and worldwide. I'm referring to Professor Miguel Nicolalis. And instead of giving you a cold, conventional introduction of his CV, I have decided to try to deliver something a bit different this time and to tell you how my personal memoirs, my memories relate to Professor Nicolalis' trajectory, both professional and even personal, since he is one of the sharpest minds of the country and he never hesitates to give his opinions about the Brazilian society and Brazilian politics. So I'll just tell you that you guys are before one of the brightest scientists of Brazil. In the history of the Brazilian science, he's had a long, successful career in the United States, more than three decades. Living in the United States, he's just become an emeritus professor at Duke University, which is one of the best ones in the world, as all of you know. But I want to emphasize some other passages and stages of his recent career. He's a medical doctor, or was in the beginning an epidemiologist, but he's been a neuroscientist for many years and he's gained recognition across the planet for his works and this frontier between the life sciences and the natural sciences. Because this is what I'd say neuroscience is all about. I mean, it's like a fork in the road, right? It's where the life sciences and the natural sciences and the humanities and the social sciences all meet. So this is Professor Nicolalis. There was one particular event I would like to stress, to place emphasis on. This was in the year 2014. Most of you won't be able to recall it. You are barely twenty years of age, but I can. I was there already. And maybe some of you are football aficionados, I don't know, maybe a few. But Professor Nicolalis was, in a way, the one responsible for the 2014 FIFA World Cup kickoff. The first kick on the ball was, in a way, the outcome of a long-time, hard work developed at the Duke Lab and with the team. Professor Nicolalis was in charge, he was the principal investigator. He was leading that team of scientists who were responsible for the development of an exoskeleton. I don't know if you can recall this memory, but it was beautiful. I mean, it was a reason for pride for all of us Brazilians. Because it was not just a milestone for Nicolalis or for the Brazilian scientific community. As a matter of fact, it was a clear sign of the full potentials of the humankind. This guy, who was a paraplegic person and who could not move his legs, was able to move it with some sort of brain command. And Professor Nicolalis is much more able to explain how it works. But from my perspective, and I was just part of the global audience who was there watching that scene, it was very touching, very moving to see this happening. And a Brazilian citizen was behind this all. It was beautiful. Okay, now I cut and we have now 2020. The pandemic is out there. And then I have had another connection with Professor Nicolalis. Because he's become one of the most far-sighted commentators of the process that was taking place in Brazil. He could anticipate with an impressive degree of accuracy what was about to come in my country. And as all of you know already, the situation in Brazil is really hard, it's tough, even despairing. And Professor Nicolalis was all the way through, he was able to see what was coming up next. It was really important to follow his work and his pieces of advice. And he's become possibly the most influential voice within this milieu of the medical sciences and the life sciences as a whole. But recently, and that struck me as a very powerful message, a very powerful thing, he who also runs a podcast, he just let us know last week, so I mean, the day you were starting your experience in this summer school, this episode was released. And Professor Nicolalis just told everyone he's leaving the position, he's quitting the job at Duke University. He is already an emeritus professor, let us remember this piece of information. So he won't be there in the US any longer. And his powerful message was as follows. "I have found out, when I came to Brazil during the pandemic, that yes, it is possible to carry out my research work and it is for any Brazilian talented scientist, it is possible to do high-level research work in the country." This is really important, a great message to start with. So Professor Nicolalis, thank you very much for all the work you have been doing for the country, not only in terms of scientific achievements, but for all your social critique. And we are so happy to have you and proud to have you here today, delivering your presentation on brain-machine interfaces. Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much, Professor Davison, for such a wonderful introduction. It's a great honor, a great pleasure to be here, to give this lecture. Of course, I have been a few times in Belo Horizonte, UFMG. I gave a couple of lectures personally to the students there. So it was, when I received the invitation, I was delighted, you know, despite the fact that we cannot be together because of the circumstances, it is still really a great, you know, pleasure to be able to speak to so many students from so many different parts of the world and through a program created by the leading Brazilian university. Thank you for the introduction. Yes, this is curiously just my second lecture as an emeritus professor. I was talking to Japan yesterday and the Japanese students, it was midnight here and Japanese students, one of the Japanese students is asking me, "Why are you so crazy?" I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, why are you leaving the US after thirty-two days, thirty-two years, I'm sorry?" And I look at it, it was a very young kid and I said, "Well, because that's the right thing to do at this point in my life." Because, you know, we have a saying in Brazil that you may leave Brazil, but Brazil never leaves you. You don't know if it's a curse or it's a blessing, but in my case, it's a blessing. And I discovered, I was trapped here during the pandemic. I came to see my mother for a couple of weeks and suddenly I couldn't return to the US. And lo and behold, I became involved into coordinating a scientific task force, handling the recommendations and advice to the governors of the northeast of Brazil. And six months went by, a year went by, sixteen months went by and I couldn't travel, I couldn't go back to the US. And basically came to my mind that what is the point, you know, of going back? Or at least, I'll go back, of course, but for a few months, a year. But it is suddenly realized, I realized that I was doing science in my living room. And that remind me of a story that I was taught at Princeton when I went to give a talk there once. And there was a young physicist who was being recruited in the early 50s to go to Princeton. And Princeton physics, the Department of Physics really wanted this kid and they wanted to recruit him badly, so they sent him to speak to Einstein and the Advanced Studies Institute. And the kid was very depressed because Princeton's offer was not what he was expecting and Einstein saw that he was almost crying. And Einstein asked this kid, "Well, why, what is the problem?" And this younger assistant professor from Harvard said, "Well, they are not going to give me the money to buy the laser I want to buy." And Professor Einstein, "Don't you think this is a big trouble? They are not going to give me the equipment I want to work. So how did you handle? How did you do? What did you use for doing your stunning research?" Apparently Einstein stopped for a second and answered, "Well, I just needed a little bit of paper and a good pencil." And so that story never left me and I think I could repeat it, you know. Next time I have to face a Japanese student that asks me why, you know, that's why. Yeah, so that's just an introduction in the spirit of the school. What, I'm going to try to share my screen here to give you, you know, the slides of what I want to talk about in more detail. I hope you can see the title slide.
Yes, perfectly.
Yeah, so when I actually went to the US, before I went, I talked to, you know, my advisor, my thesis advisor, thirty-three years ago. I remember that conversation very well in his office. And I said, "You know, Dr. Sees, I want to, I don't want to record the signals from a single neuron anymore. It doesn't make any sense. It's like trying to understand the Amazon rainforest, listening to one tree at a time. There are a hundred billion trees in the Amazon, there are a hundred billion neurons in the brain. I want to listen to many neurons at the same time." This brain symphony, we used to call it, you know, when we talked to each other. And he said, "Oh, I know a perfectly capable place in Brazil for you to do that." I said, "Well, that's funny, because I have been looking for a year, cannot find a lab that is thinking like that or can do that." He said, "No, no, no, the place is called airport. You go to the airport and you find a crazy American that will pay for you to do this idea." And he was absolutely right. I found a crazy American called John Chapin, was emerging as a leading assistant professor in the US, which, you know, in my opinion, John became the neurophysiologist of the United States in the late 80s and early 90s. And what you're seeing here is what we produced together. After I left his lab as a postdoc, went to Duke in 94, I moved from rodents to monkeys. I continued to work in rodents, but I created an adjacent monkey lab. And what you see here is the first time that we recorded the electrical activity of a hundred cells in the Y-axis, you see. Each line represents the electrical pulses produced by an individual neuron in the cortex of a behaving monkey. And here in this X-axis is time. So for the first time, we could see on the screen of our computers, very old computers, very slow computers compared to what we have today in the early 90s, what this brain symphony was all about. We could listen and see this spatial-temporal pattern of fine. And when we started looking at this, both visually and statistically, we realized that we could look at these patterns, sorry, we could look at this kind of patterns and predict what our monkeys were about to do, from a motor point of sight, point of view. We could actually tell what was that these animals were about to do in terms of moving their bodies just by looking, not at one individual cell, that would not give us any information. But if you look at a population, in this case of a hundred cells already, despite the fact that the motor cortex of an adult rhesus monkey has hundreds of millions of cells, surprisingly, just with a hundred of those cells being monitored continuously, we could tell what kind of hand movement the animal is about to make. And that was stunning. It was a shock to just observe this happening moment by moment, trial by trial. And actually, as this technology allowed us to do these experiments in many different animals all the way to human beings, I spent a great deal of the 90s and early 2000s studying the dynamics and plasticity of large cortical circuits, like the circuits that connect the frontal and parietal lobe in the monkey cortex and in the human cortex. They are very similar. And from that work, I was able to extract a series of key physiological principles that basically dictate how groups of neurons in the cortex behave. These now have been reproduced all the way from mice, rats, to monkeys, different species of monkeys, all the way to human beings. And it was at that moment, I was already an associate professor, about to become a full professor at Duke, when, again, with John Chapin, sitting down in a famous restaurant in Philadelphia, where his lab was located, where I did my postdoc. It's called, if there's anybody from Philadelphia here, they will understand immediately, it's called Geno's. It's where you get the best one-foot cheesesteak ever made in the galaxy. I recommend if you ever go there, you cannot go to Philadelphia, not go to Geno's. So we are there surrounded by truck drivers, because it's a very popular place. And we are eating this huge sandwich and suddenly John and I say to each other, "Well, we need a new paradigm. We need a paradigm that would allow us to convince our colleagues that a single neuron is not the functional unit of the brain, or the primate brain, or the mammalian brain, that the true functional unit is a collection of interconnected neurons, is an ensemble of neurons." And it's not easy to debunk that dogma. The dogma or the doctrine of the single neuron has been with neuroscience since the foundation of the field by Santiago Harmonica Rau, a famous Spanish Nobel laureate in 1906, who really, for all purposes and means, created neuroscience as we know it in Spain. And I wish I had time to talk more about him, because he was a very smart guy, not only as a scientist, but also as a guy who knew that he couldn't fight the German apparatus. He didn't write in German and so he couldn't publish his papers in the leading journals at that time. So he had no doubt, he created his own journal. And in the first issue of his own journal in Madrid, he published six of his own papers. So the Germans had to learn Spanish, to realize what the crazy guy was doing in Spain, not the other way around. And he basically created neuroscience as we speak today. But in any event, at that point, John and I converged to the idea that we needed to create this thing, to create something that we name a brain-machine interface, a way to directly connect brains to devices, artificial actuators like robotic arms, legs, or even virtual avatars of the subjects that provided the brain activity that we would use in real time to actually allow these subjects to control these devices, just by thinking. And as I remember very vividly this, I'll never forget this scene, because as we were digging into our sandwiches and the name came about, "Brain-machine interface," a huge truck diver driver sitting behind me just stood up, came to us, we cheese all over his beard and said, "You know, brain-machine interface, that's a great name." So we basically had instantaneous peer approval of our designation of a new field in neuroscience, which was a good beginning. Yet our friends at the National Institute of Health didn't really believe that we could do that, because when we sent our first grant proposal to NIH saying that we were going to create a first linkage between brains and machines, our reviewers sent a comment that I have to this day in my office, in my wall in my office at Duke, that said pretty much like, "Professors Nicolalis and Chapin need professional help of the psychiatric variety, because this will never work." Well, he actually did. And you see here the systems engineering diagram describing how it works. You need a brain and you need sensors. I'm going to show you a few of those that you, in this case, in the first generation of brain-machine interfaces are implanted, were implanted inside the brain so that you could record the extra cellular electrical signals produced by individual neurons that were, you know, conditioned, meaning amplified filter and transmitted through electronics connected to a wall of computers in which we are running a variety of mathematical models aimed at extracting from these raw electrical signals the kind of motor commands and motor parameters, at that time, twenty-one different motor parameters that are needed to make a robotic arm move. And when this robotic arm move under the control of this brain, we also realized that we would have to propose ways, new ways, to provide visual and tactile feedback to the brain describing how well this actuator, this artificial actuator was moving according to the brain instructions generated by the subject. Because as we soon realized, this actuator didn't need to be next to the subject. It could be in a different room, it could be in a different country, actually it could be in a different planet. We actually submitted a grant to NASA to do a brain-machine interface study with a rover in Mars, on the surface of Mars, controlled by the brain activity of an operator on Earth. That one we didn't get funded, but it was one of the few ones that we didn't. But in general, this was the diagram that we applied for the next 22 years with a series of new offshoots that I may not be able to describe to you, but they're all published, that created and established this field as one of the fastest-growing areas in modern neuroscience. And there are many reasons for that. One of them is because he allowed us or provide us with a completely new tool to approach basic science, key basic science questions about the brain. But also because, as you're going to see in a moment, we were able to create a variety of new therapies and neurorehab protocols to offer to patients suffering from neurological disorders like spinal cord injury or Parkinson's disease for which there are very few or none, nor no therapeutic alternatives that can be employed. So let's see how this started, from a experimental point of view. First, this is a rhesus monkey brain, the view of the cortex, a lateral view of the cortex, so you can see some of the key areas that we normally implanted in these experiments, supplementary motor area, premotor areas. This is the primary motor cortex, very key structure that is involved in controlling our body, movements of our body in a voluntary fashion, primus somatosensory cortex, posterior parietal cortex. We actually can implant all of these structures in both hemispheres with sensors in each one of our animals. For that, we need to use a technology that evolved over the last thirty years since I left John's lab and worked at Duke for the last thirty-two years. Basically, you can see these are very flexible hair-like microfilaments, metal microfilaments made of tungsten or stainless steel and covered with some isolating material like a Teflon or Isonel that can be sculptured into either two-dimensional arrays like this ten-by-ten matrix or even in three-dimensional structures that we call recording cubes. These are filaments that we can put in the same matrix, ten by ten, but each one of them has ten different contexts for recording. So we can sample in real time the electrical activity produced by cubes of cortical or subcortical tissue in behaving animals, something that nobody could do until now. And on top of that, for the last eight years or so, we have been using a multi-channel, is basically now 300-channel wireless microchips to record these signals without any tethering, any cables connecting the animal to equipment. So the animals are free to move, to interact in social groups while we are recording brain activity from them. So, uh-oh, let's see here, yeah. For a moment, I thought I had locked here, but this is the raw signals that you require with this technology. So what you see here, these waveforms, beautiful waveforms in color, each one of these colors represent electrical action potentials produced by individual neurons. And there is one yellow, one green, one red and one blue coming from this particular microwire. But as you see from an array that has about 128 channels in this case, we are able to isolate it, 242 single neurons being recorded simultaneously from this piece of neuronal tissue. So you see, one of the big advantages of this technology, which is to increase the yield, the number of cells that you can record simultaneously. And that is a big advantage, because, you know, until this technology was introduced, we could only record one neuron at a time. Imagine just this yellow here could be recorded at the time. But now we can record all cells around and connected to, or a great sample cells connected to this individual cell. So we have a feeling for a circuit and how this circuit behaves, because we are looking at multiple sites where neurons are interconnected to each other. We're making a very interesting statistical sample now of the behavior of a particular circuit. So this is how it looks from the top. If you look from the top of the implant, these are the implants on one animal and this is the maximum number of neurons that we recorded simultaneously, about 1,874 cells, almost 2,000 neurons recorded simultaneously. This is still the record in the field for this technology. And this is how it looks like. There is a protection, a very light weight protection that we use to enclose the electronics on top of the implants. We seal it and the animals can live with that forever, almost a decade after the implantation, and we can do all sorts of studies on these subjects. Well, the other great advantage of this technology is there is the longevity, as I'm saying. You can record very nice quality action potential activity from large populations of neurons over almost a decade. This is a paper that we published in 2014. We had one animal that we implanted in 2009, a monkey, but we were able to continue to record this monkey until 2018. So it's almost ten years of continuous recordings, once a day, minus the weekends. So we have animals involved in many protocols and we studied the evolution of the brain activity over years, something that was also not possible until these apparatus was implemented. So let me show you how the first major experiment with monkeys worked. So we trained our monkeys to move a joystick that control a cursor on the screen. So a target, a ball, a white ball appeared in thirty-two random locations in the screen. And if the animal was quick enough to move the cursor and intercept the target, he would get a drop of orange juice that they love. So by using this juice reward, we basically allow these animals to realize that if they perform well, they would, you know, drink half a liter of juice an afternoon and provide us with close to 1,500 trials a day. So after the animal becomes highly acquainted and has a very high performance in this task, we remove the joystick, we turn on the brain-machine interface, because as he was playing, we are recording the activity of a hundred neurons in this first study, send it to computers, feeding the mathematical models with the raw electrical activity and extracting from it the motor parameters, motor commands that the brain was creating to control its own arm, the animal's own arm. But then now we were using to control a seven-degree of freedom robotic arm that was in a different room in our lab, but was supposed to learn how to reproduce the movements needed to control the cursor, to intercept the target, so the monkey can drink juice after. so the monkey can drink juice after we remove the joystick and the animal ceases to produce movements of its own biological arm. That was the goal of this first brain-machine interface, to actually allow the animal to play the game just by thinking and having a free lunch by getting juice without the need of actually moving its own body. So let me show you how that worked. First, this is a movie of Aurora, our favorite monkey, playing this video game with a joystick. You can see down here that she's using very fine, smooth movements of the joystick to control the cursor and intercept the target to get the juice. The target is randomly showing up in different locations of the screen. But when she's trying, even before the target appears, to cheat, to guess where the target is going to be. Sometimes she may get it, but it's impossible to do that for every trial, because, again, there are thirty-two different possible locations. She cannot imagine where the next location is going to be, because it's all randomly assigned. But as you can see, she makes these beautiful trajectories immediately after the target appears to intercept it in order to get the juice reward. Well, when we saw that the monkeys were highly proficient in this task, or this monkey was, we moved to the next level. So we removed the joystick, we turned on the brain-machine interface, and now every movement that you will see of this cursor on the screen is generated by a robotic hand that is controlling the movements or producing the movements of the cursor on the screen under the control of the raw brain activity of this brain that was basically manipulated by the computer models to extract the parameters that are needed to produce this type of motion. No joystick, no body movement, but the monkey continues to play. Even the guesses are recorded. You can see that even the guesses are well represented. And the monkey is here, for the first time in history, executing a motor task by liberating its own brain from the limits of its physical body, is imagining trajectories. And our brain-machine interface is now capable of extracting what is important in this mental elaboration of these trajectories and transforming this in digital commands that a machine can understand. And the machine is now controlling the movement of the cursor. You don't see the robot, because the robot is in a different room, not to scare the monkey, because a big industrial robot. But in reality, you could use any actuator, as you're going to see in a moment. Well, when we look at the data, what we saw is that information to control this device was being generated by neurons in multiple cortical areas, all the areas that I showed to you in that image of the monkey cortex. So you see here in different colors, it doesn't matter. Just maybe blue is the primary motor cortex. Green is the posterior parotortax, far away. But you can see that there are neurons contributing meaningful information for that type of motion in all the areas that we sample. Some areas, like the primary motor cortex, are better than others. But you can see that if you vary the parameter that you are calculating from the models, like say spatial position of the hand versus gripping force, the colors change position, meaning the different area of the cortex has a special, a different type of speciality, but they all carry information about multiple parameters. So this representation of motion in the cortex is widely distributed. And each one of the cortical areas of interest that we are mentioning here are multitasking. They are representing multiple parameters at the same time. Well, when we look over time, we learned that we didn't even need that little phase of training in which the monkey is using the joystick to learn the task. We just needed to make the monkey observe on a computer screen an avatar of himself making movements every day. So after a few days, our models got better in predicting the kind of movements, in this case, a bi-manual brain-machine interface, meaning that this interface allows this monkey to produce synchronous movements of two arms simultaneous, left and right. So what we saw is that over time, the performance of our models was getting better and better, showing that the animal was learning this task just by observing it. So there was plasticity going on in cortical tissues and allowed us, basically, to train our algorithms without the animal making any movement whatsoever. This became very important when we talk about clinical applications, as you're going to see in a moment. In fact, we learned that when the animal was making a movement, this white bar represents the moment we asked the monkey with a visual stimulus to make our movements. These are two-hundred neurons over time. And in the z-axis, we are showing the magnitude of the electrical activity. And you see that all these neurons are firing a lot. Oops, sorry. All these neurons are firing a lot when the animal is about to make a movement of its arm. But here, you see the same neurons, the same two-hundred neurons, the same visual stimulus. And here, the animal is just observing an avatar arm that is very similar to its own biological arm, but it's a virtual arm moving on the screen. And the same neurons in motor cortex are responding, are firing, meaning that not only they produce information about movement that the body will produce, but they respond to visual stimuli, or visual images of a copy of its own arm moving in a computer screen. So the primary motor cortex respond to vision, despite the fact that vision is processed here, back here in the occipital pole of the cortex. So there's a lot of cross-talk, a lot of communication between cortical areas, and this is a clear demonstration of their phenomenon. Well, as time went by, we developed a variety of other paradigms. This particular one is called a brain-machine brain interface. And what that allows us to do is not only to send signals to a robotic arm to move, but to send feedback signals directly from the artificial device to the brain, to the tactile part of the brain, so that when an avatar hand, for instance, is being controlled by this animal on a computer screen, and the hand is touching an object, a virtual object, the brain is getting feedback about the microspatial texture of that object, something that a monkey cannot see on a computer screen. So the monkey can scan its virtual hand on the surface and basically experience what is the tactile texture of this object, without the need of using its own hand for that. So I'm going to show you very quickly an experiment in which a monkey is controlling an avatar arm and an avatar hand. The avatar hand is scanning through the surface of three objects that look identical from a visual point of view, but each one has a microtexture that the monkey cannot see. But when it scans, under the control of its brain, a hand on the outer ring of these objects, there is a texture associated to it. And every time the hand goes in there, we send electrical signal directly to the tactile cortex of the brain, whose frequency is proportional to the spatial texture of this object. So since the objects are moving on the screen from trial to trial, the animal has to identify one given texture by basically decoding these electrical pulses that we are sending to their brain directly. And that's exactly what the animals do. Are you still there, Bruno? Good, just making sure that you're still with us. So here we go. You're going to see a movie, you're going to listen in the background of the noise produced by one neuron receiving this information, this tactile information that I just mentioned to you. You're going to see a hand scanning, a virtual hand. Of course, I put it for you here in this movie, the labels, the sound. The monkey doesn't have any of that, no sound, no labels. It has to identify the correct texture just by interpreting the signals that are coming through the brain-machine brain interface collected by this virtual hand touching the surface of the object. And it does that from trial to trial, and it gets juice reward for that. So this is the sound of a brain. The avatar hand is scanning the objects, and it finds the correct one, impresses the center, and it gets juice. Now, the correct texture is in a different location, but the animal finds it, because it's interpreting the texture directly from the feedback that the avatar hand provides, directly to the tactile cortex. So you see that the animal scans all the objects most of the time, but very quickly finds the correct texture. And in fact, after two weeks of training, they are performing at the same level that they used to do when they used their real fingertips. So we get to the level of performance that is very consistent to the natural tactile ability of monkeys. But no body involved, not to move and not to feel. This bypasses the body completely. So before I tell you what we did with that from a clinical point of view, I want to show you a final experiment, because when we publish all these papers, one of the questions that we got from reviewers, they were very, you know, consistent, was, "Well, that's okay, but could a monkey learn to control something that it never experienced before as a natural limb or appendices of the body? Could a monkey control, for instance, an electric car? Electronic wheelchair? It has nothing to do with the dynamics of a limb, a leg, or arm, or a body for a monkey. The cortex has never encountered an object like that in real life. But could we make monkeys to learn the transform that is needed to now using a wireless interface to drive an electric car in a lab from initial points of departure all the way to a location where the monkey is going to collect grapes as a reward? Could a monkey learn to drive an artificial device that has no similarity whatsoever to its body? And the answer is yes. You're going to see the first self-driven car control by brain activity directly. Imagine getting to your car and not having to either, you know, steer the car or, you know, work with any lever or any pedal. Just imagine what you want to do, and the car would respond to you. That's pretty much what our monkeys did. So these are three different points of departure in a room. During the beginning of each trial, the monkey is randomly assigned to one of these initial locations. It has to create a trajectory in its mind that is transported to the wheelchair, so that the electrical motors of the wheelchair will drive the monkey in an autonomous way to a target location where grapes are going to be placed, so it can get a reward. After it collects the grapes, we put the monkey in a new position, and it has to create a new trajectory to get back there and collect more grapes. This is all de novo. The animal is not trained in these trajectories, because the exact location is slightly different from trial to trial. So you're going to see the monkey driving first from the top of the lab and then from the front. So here we go. There he goes, our little monkey driving its electric car, collecting grapes. We put it back in a different position. It has to improvise mentally a new trajectory, and it drives back to the location. So he keeps doing that for a whole afternoon. And he can do that not only in a room like this with a few meters, but he can do that in much open or much larger spaces. And you will see now in this camera that the animal really starts moving just as it gets closer to collect the grapes, because it's anxious to eat the grapes. But it doesn't create any body movement to drive the wheelchair. It doesn't need to, because it only needs to imagine what is the best trajectory, and that trajectory is translated into commands that the electrical motor can, electrical motors of the car can understand. Well, with these results in hand, we realized, John and I, way back in two thousand and two, that brain-machine interfaces could have a profound clinical impact in providing patients that had suffered, for instance, severe spinal cord injuries and were paralyzed below the level of the injury and couldn't feel their bodies below the level of the injury to regain mobility. Because we knew that patients continued to imagine more movements inside their brains. They cannot send electrical signals through the body, because the nerves of the spinal cord have been damaged, so there's no way to carry these electrical signals down to the periphery. But we reasoned in two thousand and two that if we could make these patients imagine these movements, a brain-machine interface could allow them to move again if they were wearing a robotic vest, a new body, that they would wear like a suit, like a robotic suit that would be controlled by their brain activity and provide feedback so that they knew how well they were performing under these conditions. That's where I decided, or that's when I decided to create this project, called the Walk Again Project, an international consortium nonprofit initiative, bringing together scientists of many disciplines from all over the world. In fact, we were able to recruit up to a hundred fifty-six people from twenty-five countries, neuroscientists, mathematicians, computer scientists, engineers of all disciplines, roboticists, philosophers, psychologists, rehabilitation personnel, physicians, to work together here in Brazil initially for the first eighteen months to allow a subject, a paralyzed, chronic spinal cord injury patient, to deliver, as you heard, the opening kickoff for the two thousand fourteen World Cup. Well, for that, we selected eight patients from the Brazilian database of spinal cord injury patients. Brazil has a very large database, more than sixty-five thousand patients there. And we selected eight that had devastating lesions from three to thirteen years ago, meaning way beyond the period in which spontaneous recovery is expected. Because after one year of a spinal cord injury, the chances of any neurological recovery is less than one percent. So we reasoned that if we get patients, we got patients that were beyond three years of the lesion, we would have a very select homogeneous group. We placed these patients in a protocol that involved a non-invasive brain-machine interface. This was done using scalp electrodes, flat electrodes for electroencephalography, which you don't need to penetrate inside the head. You record electrical potentials on the surface of the head. And we actually put the patients into a multi-dimensional training paradigm, including virtual reality, that allowed them to control avatars or learn to control avatars of themselves in a virtual soccer field and receiving tactile feedback of their feet touching the ground of these avatars on their forearms, so they could feel the texture of the ground as these avatar walk in virtual reality. And then, as they became proficient in this task, we moved them to a variety of off-the-shelf robotic devices up to the time in which they were able to move into the exoskeleton that we built and that they could control directly from this EEG-based brain-machine interface. This is the device we built as the first generation. We are already in the third generation of this device. We are going to announce the third generation in a few weeks in an international public announcement of this new network that I'm building now. And it's very interesting, because this first generation was, of course, over-engineered for safety. It had, you know, a huge number of devices to prevent any chance of fall of the patient. So we had to protect the patient's health in first place. So it has all sorts of safety devices that later we realized we didn't need. It has a cockpit, it's an electrical hydraulic machine. These lines that you see here are lines filled with very high-density oil that we obtained from, you know, very select refineries that produce this high viscosity oil, because it produces continuous movements of the robot, not the fractionated electrical movements that you see most robots. This is analog-like motion, because the patients are very fragile. You cannot produce very brusque movements, and they'd like to have, they told us, they wanted to have more natural kind of leg movements instead of the kind of robotic movements that they saw on movies or on the internet. So we had twelve gyroscopes all over the exo to measure continuous displacements, or continuously the displacement in three dimensions of the exos to prevent any fall. And then we put these guys to train. The surface of the feet of the exo had another innovation created by Gordon Schengen, the technico-inverser Munich. This is printed circuit boards that contain pressure sensors and contact sensors that allowed every time that a patient touches the ground, the generation of a pressure signal that is transmitted to a haptic display. These are like cellphone vibrating elements. These are like cellphone vibrating elements, many of them that we place on the surface of the skin of the forearm. So the patient receives the tactile feedback on the arm, on the forearm. And the brain interprets this as coming from their own legs. We generated this illusion that was very prevalent among the eight patients. They actually had a phantom limb sensation when walking on this exo. They thought that their own legs were walking and touching the ground, not the exoskeleton legs. So this is a patient training in virtual reality. You see that she's watching this avatar herself walking on grass on a soccer field. She's getting tactile feedback on her forearms. And she, when we move here to sand, walking on sand, you're going to see that she's going to start moving her hands. That's because she's finding the best parameters, intensity, frequency and velocity of spread of the tactile feedback so that her brain really gives a feeling that she's walking on sand or on grass or on the sidewalk of a street in São Paulo. So we use this self-training paradigm to allow the patients to experience or maximize their experience in virtual reality. Next is the day that came for each one of the eight patients because all eight became proficient in this task. The first day, they actually put all together and walked for the first time in years autonomously using the brain machine interface to control the movements of the exoskeleton. You're going to see a few lights showing up. These are commands that we created for the patient to realize that everything is going okay. They have to alternate using the left and the right hemisphere to control the left and the right leg so that they generate a rhythmic gait pattern. And you're going to see that as they walk, the patient is looking straight ahead to a huge mirror, like a Bilarina mirror, that is giving visual feedback for them. So the brain assimilates that they are back walking upright. And now the tactile feedback generated by the sensors on the surface of the feet is already provided to the forearms during this walking session. So here you go. The patient receives confirmation that the exo is working. He starts imagining that he wants to walk. This is a high thoracic level paraplegic. This is the level of his lesion. And yet, he's experiencing that he's walking by himself. And all patients told us every day that they couldn't feel the exo. They actually felt their own legs moving and touching the ground because the feedbacks that we provided to them generated this illusion. It led the brain to generate a feeling that there was a new body, that they are again wholesome. Because when you are paraplegic, when you're paraplegic, your sense of self contracts to just the part of the body that you feel, that you still have motion and you still have sensitivity. So below the level of the lesion, your brain literally ignores what your body is. Well, we are able to restore to these patients the feeling that they have a full body and that was fundamental. I cannot show you the kicking on the stadium because FIFA didn't allow us to have the copyrights of the image. They wanted to charge us a fortune, $8,000, €8,000 a second, which, as you know, no scientist on the planet has to pay for. But, you know, we're in Brazil, in a football stadium in São Paulo. The Swiss bodyguards were already, because they frisked all the time we went to the field. So we couldn't tape anything that was going on there. But, you know, they were already waiting for the ceremony to start. We are in the ramp of the stadium in this moment. And somehow, nobody knows how, one of the members of the team, nobody knows who, had a cellphone embedded in a place of the body that no Swiss bodyguard can even imagine. A Brazilian can hide a cellphone. And when the bodyguards look straight ahead, this Brazilian neuroscientist that nobody knows who he is, was able to tape the final kick. Giuliano Pinto, the person in charge of the opening kickoff of the 2014 ceremony of the World Cup, a T4 paraplegic, complete paraplegic for 10 years, asked us, you know, I'm too nervous. There are 65,000 people screaming out there and there's 1.2 billion people watching this on TV. I want to do one more kick. He had done already 57 kicks on the field and had been able to accomplish 55 of them correctly, which is much more than the Brazilian center forward in that World Cup Fred was able to do during the World Cup. But at that point, we said, okay, Giuliano, let's do it. So what you're going to see is exactly what happened on the field that afternoon, despite the fact that FIFA doesn't know. If you ever meet any FIFA official, don't tell them that you saw a movie of the World Cup opening kickoff, okay? Because I would be in trouble and I still don't have that money. So what you see here is when the LEDs, the LEDs on the exo that you see on the head, on the helmet and over the exo, because this was mid-afternoon during the winter and FIFA didn't allow us to have a microphone to describe to the public what was going to happen. So we created a visual display. We made our exo a visual display. So when you see the blinking lights, blue lights, it's because the exo is on. Giuliano has rested his forearms on the armrest of the exo that turns the exo on. And when you see green and yellow, the Brazilian colors flowing from the head to the legs of Giuliano, it's because he's ready to generate the motor command in his mind that will kick the ball. The ball placed by one of my former students in front of him, Suleman Shokur, who is now assistant professor at the Ecolpoliteknik für der Halle de Luzan in Switzerland. And you're going to see what happened on the field that afternoon on June 12th at 3:30 São Paulo time. Unfortunately, it was in the wrong stadium. It should have been on the Palmeiras stadium, but it was not. It was in the wrong stadium in São Paulo. But nonetheless, it happened. So here we go. The exo is on. Giuliano get a visual image that he's ready to go. He starts imagining straight up to his body and he kicks his ball. He kicks his ball first in his mind. And 500 milliseconds later, the exo responded to his mind and kicked the ball. But what Giuliano didn't know when he went to the stadium, not even at this moment, he knew because we only turned off this sensor, this pressure sensor gear on the toes of the exo on the stadium without him knowing. So when he kicked the ball, he got tactile feedback in his arms describing the impact with the ball, something he had never felt since he was lesion 10 years ago and never felt during training because we never turned that pressure sensor on. So when we all run to celebrate Giuliano's goal, which, you know, for a T4 complete paraplegic was really a World Cup kind of goal, Giuliano was not screaming, I score, I kicked, it did, it worked. He was screaming, I felt the ball. I felt the impact. Because his brain was playing out his memories as a kid, as a Brazilian kid, playing soccer on the streets of his hometown. And he was generating the entire gestalt that every Brazilian kid, since he's inside his mother's womb, kicking the placenta learns to appreciate. It sounds simple to all of us that walk every day, but for someone who was in a wheelchair, an athlete, a track and field Olympic level athlete that was in a wheelchair for 10 years, feeling the kick of a soccer ball was a gigantic event. Well, we thought this was the end. But when we brought these patients back to the lab a month after the World Cup, we had the shock of our lives. In fact, it was the shock of my entire career. I never expected in 40 years of a career to see what I'm going to describe to you now. When Giuliano was examined blindly by a team of neurologists, an international team of neurologists, he was, as I said, since the beginning of his lesion 10 years ago, he was labeled a T4, which is about this level. However, when he was examined on July 2014, he was classified as a T11. In a matter of six months of training, he had gained seven segments of the spinal cord because he was now feeling his body from T4 to T11. He was contracting muscles in his abdomen and he was controlling internal organs like the bladder inside this segment, something that he never did since he was lesioned. Another patient, a woman, was a T11 13 years ago, since 13 years ago, had become a L-something. Simultaneously, she had gained six or seven segments and was able to refer to us that she could feel the contractions during her period every month. In fact, she went to become pregnant and to deliver a baby nine months later. And she followed and felt the entire pregnancy, went into labor, felt the contractions for labor, but it had to have a C-section because of too much osteoporosis on her bones in her hip. She couldn't do a normal delivery. Nonetheless, she had visceral functions returning together with tactile. And as you're going to see, all patients that we kept following for 28 months because we shut up, we didn't say anything 21 seven months later, we waited for 21 months later because it was so out of this universe that this was happening that we needed much more data to justify reporting this. We waited, imagined almost two years more because the average recovery in dermatomes below a level lesion of these patients was 10 dermatomes. Giuliano at a certain given moment could feel his toes. If you use a pin, he was blindfolded and you use a pin to touch one of his toes in the left or right foot, he could tell you which foot and which finger, I'm sorry, which toe you were touching. Something that for a guy who was only feeling mid-chest level when he started with us, it was almost unbelievable. But it was not only feeling. Seven months after the training started, we noticed that some patients were beginning to show voluntary motor contractions of the legs, of the muscles in their legs. So we waited five more months, 12 months after training. And suddenly, every single patient, in yellow, you see the muscles that became active again and under voluntary control of the patients. Green means no muscle control below the level of the lesion. You can see that all patients have green in the beginning. But seven months after the training began, all patients started having voluntary motor contractions that you can see here on recordings of EMG on the surface of their legs. They were moving their legs by themselves with no exo, no need for a brain machine interface. This is what one of the ladies, the one that I mentioned to you, that had 14 years of a lesion prior to the training, or 13 years of a lesion prior to the training, this is one year after she started training with us. There is a test that we do in every patient. We suspend them. We put them very close to the ground and we ask them to try to walk. And for years and for the first six months of our training, of course, they couldn't do anything. It's very frustrating because for 10 minutes, this patient is suspended and cannot move. Well, look what this lady did to us 13 months after she started training in our protocol. She's suspended. I ask her to move and suddenly she's walking. After 14 years of a T11 lesion, complete spinal cord lesion. Well, she moved the right leg. We waited another year, asked the same question and suddenly she did this to us one year later. You're going to see some cables because we are now recording every EMG we could put our hands on. Every muscle we could record, we did. And look at that. She moves the right leg again. But suddenly now, she's moving the left leg. We move her back. She walks again. And she did that for an hour, every day, day after day. She started walking without exo, without any other, of course, she needs to have a body suspension at this stage. But the recovery was so stunning, it was so unprecedented, that every one of the seven patients out of eight, one patient had to drop out at 12 months because of personal issues. She had to move to another city. But every one of the seven patients that started as complete paraplegics or Asia A or Asia B in the American classification is this total paraplegia, no movement, no sensitivity below the level of the lesion. At different moments in time over the next 28 months evolved to become Asia C, which is partial paraplegia because they could now move some muscles. They could move part or their entire legs. This graph that you're seeing here had never been published before. In fact, the videos that you just saw when we published this in one of the journals in Nature, it was placed on the Nature website for a week. 27 million people watched this video that you just saw, the video of these patients walking again. And the recovery was so tremendous that a few patients didn't even need the exo anymore. They needed a little bit of suspension, body help because anti-gravitation muscles are the worst to recover. It takes perhaps much longer. But if you give them a little help with a little $10 card, aluminum card that old people use to help walk, these walkers, and you provide a little bit of electrical stimulation on the surface of the skin to help the contractions that they can produce by themselves, you're going to see the first patient, one of the three patients that actually could walk by himself. In the first session, he still needs some help from the physical therapist to, you know, get used to the procedure. We are now delivering small electrical currents to 12 different locations on the legs just to help him out. Nine sessions or eight sessions later, in the ninth session, he's walking by himself. He doesn't need frames on his legs. He just needs about 50 to 60% of body suspension and a card, a $10 card or walker, as we call it in the United States. And he's walking by himself. And in fact, he can also use a brain machine interface to control the device that delivers the currents to his legs for help. So you're asking me, probably, you would like to ask me, probably, how in heaven has that happened? There was someone that asked me, what did we put in the water in Brazil for these patients? Because, you know, short of a magic potion, they couldn't understand how that could have happened down here. Luckily, this has already been reproduced by another independent group. We reproduced in a second group our own results, original results. But a second group in China has already reproduced our results. They're about to publish with many more patients than we did. And with more intense training, one hour a day, five days a week, they got the same kind of recovery but faster than we did. Meaning the cumulative sessions, the intensity and frequency of sessions matter. And if you start early than we did, probably if you start soon after the original lesion, you may get a better recovery. And the reason that's true is because when we look at the MRIs of our patients, what we noticed as Professor Calculas in '71, an Australian pathologist had reported. In his study, 65% of the patients that are Asia A, complete paraplegics, is to have some fibers of the spinal cord connected after the original trauma. They are probably quiet, silent. And that's the reason people go paraplegic and cannot feel their bodies. But he said, well, I found 65% of patients have, between 2 and 20% of the fibers is still connected. In our small sample of eight patients, we found that 50% is still had fibers. As you can see, this white stuff here, this is the level of the lesion. And you see this is still a few fibers in here. You still see a little bit of connectivity despite the lesion. And our hypothesis is that's exactly what happened. Through the training that I just described to you, the brain machine interface, virtual reality combined with robotics, the motor cortex of these patients turn it on. And these signals found a way to be rerouted to the body periphery through the fibers that were left. Same way, signals generated by the movements that the exo generated in the patient's own body, information from peripheral sensors which remain alive in these patients and viable, probably sends signals to these fibers up to the brain. And that's the reason the patients could still feel something or regain the ability to have tactile, partial tactile sensitivity. So this is basically the story I wanted to tell you, how basic science over a span of 32 years went from... how basic science over a span of thirty-two years went from, when I started in John's lab, my job was to twig facial vibrissa in rats and record cells in the somatocere cortex to see how they responded to this mechanical stimulation of the mustache of the rat. Thirty years later, I was on a soccer field in the opening ceremony of the World Cup, watching a paraplegic kick a ball using a brain machine interface. So for those of you who are just starting in science, the reason I say that this is one of the most rewarding professions in our species is because you know the door you enter, because you opened the door by yourself, but you have no clue what you are going to see behind that door. And that's the fun of it. You are paid to be a kid for thirty, forty years, not knowing where you are going to land. So I truly recommend it. Before I finish, I just want to mention these names, sorry. Michael Shankari, Eric Arjun, Poha, Gary, they have been with me for, you know, many, many years at Duke. Anna Danati and Soleiman Shakur, who are here in Brazil in our institute in Brazil and now are professors in different places of the world. Soleiman is in Switzerland now. My great friend, one of the greatest roboticists in the world, who got my phone call one day and said, "Are you sure you want to build a robotic device to deliver a kick in the opening ceremony of the World Cup?" And I replied, "Gordon, is the only way we'll get tickets for the opening game." And he said, "Yes," instantaneously. And Hannes Blor, who built the haptic display that I mentioned to you during this talk. Thank you very much.
Professor.
Please allow me to ask you a big round of applause. Wonderful, great, beautiful, beautiful.
Professor Nicolalis, we have no words to thank you for the stories you've shared and fascinating experiments you have been doing at the laboratory and such important outcomes you've been getting from them. We have many questions, unfortunately, of course, we won't have time for all of them, but I will start around and we'll go until three-thirty, okay? And then, the first question, I would like to ask, I'm a psycholinguist, and I understand this was not ultimately the aim of the experiment, but is it possible, from the outcomes of the research, to have any evidences on the nature of learning, memory and brain plasticity?
Oh, sure. No, no. Actually, we created a paradigm of brain machine interfaces to study plasticity at a cortical level. That was the, I didn't say it openly, but that was the reason we had that meeting, John Chapin and I, because we wanted to quantify plasticity in a very different way. And so, brain machine interface had been used for twenty-two years now, and many other papers documented some type of plasticity.
Thank you very much, Professor. Professor, I'm aware we don't have much time, so I'm trying to gather some questions. And these questions are about ethics and technology. And the first question is from Bruno Puccini, and he's a student at UFMG. And his question is, Professor Nicolalis, with all due respect, what ethical implications from the use of brain machine interface do you foresee? Do you think this technology could pose new dilemmas for us? If so, of what kind? And we have another question from Juliana Guimarães, she's also a student at UFMG. And her question is, will the twenty-first century science be able to test without using animals, knowing that they are trapped and experiences can cause fear, pain and death?
Well, my professor in terms of medicine used to say that every piece of knowledge or technology created by human beings have a good and a bad side. It depends how we use it and depends how we regulate it and how we democratically decide whether it is, you know, to be introduced in society or not. He used to give this example. Fortunately, I carry with me the device, he said it was the most important device for a physician to practice, a big pen. And the big pen, as you know, have a cap. He taught me how to do tracheostomies with a cap, to save someone that is dying. That's the good application of a cap of a big pen. And I used to tell my children that I was capable of doing that, they always behave very well after death. So, but he also told me that this big cap could injure someone. It could go in the eye of someone, or it could, you know, go into worse places that I don't need to mention here. So that's the dilemma of our species. Knowledge brings a decision embedded in it. Are we going to use the big pen to, a tracheostomy that saves a life of someone in an athletic shock? Or are we going to poke the eye of a fellow member of our department during a faculty meeting? That depends on us. You know, ethics is not something that you do, ethics is something that you practice. So, and you practice as part of society, so of course, there are ethical issues. But most of the ethical issues that have been related to brain machine interfaces these twenty years are provided by people who are much more suitable for writing science fiction books than actually talking about the impact of this technology. Like people like Elon Musk, who has a faint idea where the brain is located. He barely knows where it is located, but he thinks that he knows what brain machine interface is capable of doing or not doing. For instance, I can assure you, you are not going to download your brain to a city room and give it to your mom or to your kids. You are not going to learn French by uploading French grammar directly to your brain. That's what he promised would happen. No, it's not going to happen at all, because information is treated and embedded in the brain completely differently than it happens to be processed by a Turing machine or a computer. We are not digital devices, we are, our brains are, if anything, analog, mainly analog. There are digital components, like language, it's more digital. But information in the brain is embedded in the organic tissue that constitutes the brain. So you cannot extract it, you cannot make juice, memory juice, like he wants to. So that's the answer to the second question. Yes, the answer to the first question, the answer to the second question, after forty years, I'm going to celebrate forty years of my career in January of next year. And I have no qualm or doubt that everything I did as an experimentalist and all my colleagues have done were for the benefit of mankind. If we can make humans, twenty-five million people, this is the number of paraplegic people living in the world right now, in a wheelchair or a bed. There is, according to the World Health Organization, one out of seven human beings have some sort of mental disorder, that's one billion people. If we can help the lives of these people get a better quality of life, yes, every experiment that is regulated by ethical committees, that is agreed upon by the community and society, yes, should be performed. I have no doubt about that. And if you are taking a vaccine for the coronavirus sometime soon, if you're not a vaccine denier, or if you have been in a different galaxy the last seventeen months, that vaccine was tested in animals, let me remind you. So the defense rest is case forever.
All right, thank you so much, Professor. I think we have time for one more big question that was asked by many, in different ways, was asked by some of our students. That has to do with the accessibility to this sort of technology. So will we be alive to see all the keyboard paraplegic patients walk? How is it, is it going to be accessible for the population, the entire population? How long will that take? Will, how affordable and reproducible would it be? These are questions from all over there. They want to know, when are we going to actually see them walking on the street, robots, walking on the street?
Remember, remember that Japanese student from yesterday? Well, that's what I told him, just stay tuned. In a couple of months, you're going to see the first less than ten thousand dollar Exoskeleton Control by iPhone. All the electronics that you saw in the backpack of that exo has been reduced to a meager iPhone that the patient can wear on his or her shoulder or arm. And he can basically go around for less than what a poor man's car in the United States cost. It's not the end of the story, it's going to get better. But that's the main reason I dropped my comfortable job as a tenured professor in the United States to go around the world when the pandemic is over. Because, yeah, because my objective is to see a guy in Nairobi walking with not-so-expensive iPhone on his pocket, you know, a paraplegic Kenyan, walking in Nairobi with an Exoskeleton and eventually kicking balls with his kids for much less than we had to put up for the World Cup opening ceremony.
Excellent. We still have five minutes, so I'm just going to ask John a question about machines and employability and how, machines and employability. Will we ever be replaced by robots at some point in life?
In reality, in fact, in my book, my latest book, that is called The True Creator of Everything, How the Human Brain Sculpt the Universe as We Know It, I said that my fear is not the machines are going to replace us, because they won't, they can't. There is no way to simulate the human brain or to simulate what we are unique in terms of producing as part of the human condition. Simply, we are not algorithmically made, we evolved. We are not built by anybody, we emerge, which is a process that cannot be reduced, and this is a theorem that I demonstrated with a mathematician years ago. Organic systems that evolved through natural selection cannot be reduced to algorithms or cannot be mimicked through algorithms, because natural selection happened through, as you know, since a certain Charles Darwin mentioned that, that it happens through a series of random events that cannot be modeled by deterministic algorithms. In any event, machines are not going to replace us. I'm much more concerned about us mimicking machines. Our behaviors is starting to resemble machines, automation, total obsession of digital logic, immersion on algorithms that, you know, I told to the Japanese crowd yesterday, that the moment I knew I had to do something outside academia was one of my, one of the brightest graduate students in my lab, suddenly talking to me about his thesis, stood up and started walking around me in the lab. And I look at the guy and say, "What the hell is going on?" And he said, "No, my Apple Watch says that I'm missing two hundred steps today." And since it's eleven-thirty at night, I need to walk the two hundred steps. And I look at that kid, which I love as a son, and I was thinking to myself, "My God, the day we behave under the command of the Apple Watch is the end of this species." And that's what I'm afraid, because the brain is plastic. The brain is absorbing all this digital logic. And since the rewards of our planet are determined by social media, peer pressure, how many hours we spend on our phones and our iPads and computers, I'm guilty of that myself. We are destroying the analog attributes that made us capable of reaching the level of sophistication that we did as a species, intuition, creativity, gut feeling, you name it, intelligence. Because I have to tell you, and I got in a lot of trouble with a huge community, but I'm very proud of the trouble I got in, in a meeting a few years ago, when I said, artificial intelligence is neither artificial nor intelligent, because intelligence is attribute of organisms. And there's nothing artificial, we created this gizmos. It came from here, is a projection of our imagination and intuition, but it's not intelligent. We are intelligent to some degree. Although I'm renaming our species in my book, either to be homo digitalis or homo not-so-sapins as a new acronym. So, no, we are not going to become machines by imposition. We may become machines by decision, by option, and that's much more fearful. Makes me much more fearful, because that's not the way that got us here. If you would tell a Cromwell man that was painting a cave, underground cave, thirty-five thousand years ago, that he could go to a site and he order a Van Gogh, you know, and he would get a replica of Van Gogh in the mail, he would look at you and said, "For what?" The fun is in the painting, for Christ's sake. He probably wouldn't say "Christ's sake," but he probably would tell you, "What is the point? I came down here underground to paint, I didn't come here to order a painting." And that's the difference between why I believe that those guys had more wisdom than we do have now, thirty-five thousand years in the future, despite all the technologies that surrounds us.
Beautiful, that's so comforting to hear you, and I would just.
Oh, and by the way, I do paint.
Oh, that's great, that was beautiful.
I don't order.
Thank you for sharing that with us, that's great. Okay, Professor, I would like to convey everyone's gratitude towards your speech today. Everybody's like, everybody's flabbergasted, for lack of a better word, by your experiments and by your findings and by the outcomes of your research. And thank you very, very much for being with us at UFMG Summer School on Brazilian Studies this year. We're so pleased to have you, we're so pleased to have met you, even virtually, I mean, despite being virtually. It was such a great honor, and I hope to hear from you even more. And if you could, some people are asking if you have anywhere we could follow you and follow your research and your experiments. Is there a website or social media?
Yeah, I just put my social media, Twitter, Instagram. I also have a page on, since the World Cup, I have a page where I show our results and our publications. We just got a paper on the epidemiology of the first wave of Brazil, so you can read that too. It was one of the Nature magazines, so I'm very proud of that little paper after forty years as a neuroscientist.
Great, excellent, thank you ever so much, then Professor.
Thank you, it was a great pleasure.
Thank you so much.
I have no words to thank you enough. I would just ask our students to open your cameras, if you can, to say goodbye to Professor Nicolalis, so I can see you and all the difference, all the diversity of this summer school on Brazilian Studies. Okay, good enough. So most of our students, Professor Nicolalis, they are from Asia, so they're seen as just tomorrow. They're now sleeping, I guess.
Well, I hope they have a good night of sleep.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, thank you very much.
Thank you, you guys, have a wonderful school.
Thank you, wish you all the best with your endeavors.
Thank you, I appreciate it.